Council, good evening. We're going to go ahead and get started. It's six o'clock. We do have a form of the council present with us now. I know the mayor is here as well as Councilmember Moore. If I could, just for the purposes of tonight's discussion and meeting, one of the things that the council needs to do, and we need to add to the agenda tonight, is an executive session. We need to do that here right at the onset of the meeting. So, as soon as the mayor calls the meeting to order, I'll ask that you add an executive session to discuss litigation to the agenda, and we will adjourn into that. I anticipate that meeting to be no longer than ten minutes, and then we'll be back to take up the business of the evening. Now, for the public's benefit, I would ask that while we are gone in executive session, that anybody who intends to speak publicly tonight to fill out a public comment card and turn it in to the staff that will be here in the room. We've had a tendency to accept late comment cards in an attempt to place the comments in an order, potentially, and so what I'd like to do tonight is just ask that you put your cards in, and those cards which are received when we come back into the room will be the people that will speak in public comment tonight in the order in which those cards are received. Mr. Mayor, just wanted to give that quick update to the group in the room while you were making your way down here, so we're ready to go wherever you are.
Thank you, Chris. I'll open up the meeting first. Welcome to the November ninth, two thousand and fifteen work session. Work sessions are a more informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken tonight on any of the items we discuss. Tonight, we have one item on the agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card, as Chris said, and turn it in to the city clerk. Public comment will be allowed for a total of ten minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of this item. Once the item is called, no other cards will be taken. We'll be glad to, depending on how many public comment cards we have, if we need to adjust the time slightly, talk to the council about that. And again, as Chris said, we have got an executive session that shouldn't last more than ten minutes, so as we step aside and discuss that, it's on litigation. If you guys would make sure you have your public comment cards, if there are any, and we'll be back as soon as possible. We need to take a vote to go in. Okay, do I have a motion to move into executive session to discuss litigation?
Second.
Okay, got a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. And also, thank you to the planning commission for being here tonight with us, so we can work together and discuss this item.[170.01]
One council member here, so. Sudi, how many public comment cards do you have?
I think there's more coming, so.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Thirteen.
Move to reconvene the work session.
Do you have a second on reconvene?
Second.
All right, I have a motion, a second to reconvene our meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes for council.
Second.
Bill and Reg. Okay, so you've got, how many?
Thirteen and then five to read into the record.
Okay, and are there ones to read in the record fairly lengthy?
One page.
Each?
Yes.
Let's get the council on here. I'm of the opinion on someone that sent one in, just for the record, and based on all the public comment that we have here, and I'll get some feedback from the council, but just for you to forward those to us so that everybody has those, but rather than spend the time reading it out and give the respect for the time for the folks that are here.
I'll do that, yes sir.
Is that okay with the council? Okay, so, everything that's been submitted to you, obviously make sure that we all, everybody gets that, including the planning commission, and that'll all be public record too, if anybody needs. And then we'll have the public comment, we've got thirteen, so, that's a reasonable number, I think, so, two minutes if everybody's good with that. Two minutes or less, I would say, if you don't mind if you've got the same thing to say that someone said before, just kind of agree with it in the interest of time, so.
Quick, before we get started, just a little, we've got a lot of microphones on these tables tonight, I think we were one short, so we're wishing. Yeah, let's just practice as best we can against good microphone etiquette and speak into it because we'll need to be heard at home. But is that working for you, Dave? I was getting a good bit of feedback. You can be as close as possible to the mic, that's great. Recognizing that those table mics that are over by the planning commission are hypersensitive, so if you drop anything on them, it's really loud at home.
Okay, again, thank the planning commission for being here with us too, and obviously thank you from the public being here too. So, we'll start with public comment, Sudi, if you'll please call the first person. And can everybody hear me okay with the mic? Rudolph, does it ring?
Let me pull your, a little closer to you.
Is that any better?
No.
David, are we on?
We are, Matthew, bring me that remote.
Okay, is that better?
Test it again.
Test, can you hear me? Okay. Okay, we call the public comment.
Do you want a time?
Yeah.
Five minutes?
Two.
Yeah. Our first speaker is Scott Reese.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and members of the planning commission, I'm Scott Reese, doing business at 13685 Highway Nine, Milton, Georgia 3004. Tonight, I would hope that you would consider all points on both CSO and changes to the development code, I guess the ag zone property. My comment is, the CSO, if you so desire, should be optional only, and that you take whatever steps necessary to protect the city and its citizens from failure on the affluent or wastewater. I know there is an ability to handle that, but you need to be very careful on that process and make sure that adequate money is set aside by the HOA or whatever board to replace the system. Also, on, in changes to the ag development, I think roughly fifteen percent of the city of Milton is not developed, so eighty-five percent is. I kind of feel put upon for if the fifteen percent that has not been developed is left to create the rural view shed and the rural feel that's going through, and I feel like we're going to have two levels. We're going to have the newly developed property and the older developed property with two sets of regulations. And I think we need to strive to adequately create an equilibrium. So if you're going to take away from one side on the setback on the existing road, any proposed roads, you need to come in with a, the difference there to make up the two. That's basically, is that you try to, anything, I don't think it's fair to shoulder all of the rural view shed or any of the enhancements.
Two minutes has elapsed.
Okay, thank you.
Our next comment comes from Ms. Laura Bentley.
Okay, can you hear me? I'm Laura Bentley, and I'm at 2500 Bethany Church Road. This work session is a great opportunity for us to focus on starting the discussion about our AG1 standards. We do not, however, need to rehash the CSO. The only new information relevant to the CSO tonight are the emails that I handed over to the planning commission at their last meeting. Those emails disclose the following, that the process was indeed flawed. There were numerous areas in which there are blatant conflicts of interest, which makes me very skeptical that the CSO is in the best interest of Milton. Great to have community involvement, but not sidebar conversations, emails with a consultant that's working for the city. The self-appointed committee was not transparent. Finally, in the emails, Don, Randall, Bruce, all the consultants agreed that Milton is a mismatch for the CSO. They really tried hard to force a fit, but it seems that they all agreed in the end that it was a difficult sell, given that our city does not have sewer. So, the best and most positive outcome for our city tonight is for the council to quickly conclude that the CSO is not a good ordinance for Milton. Planning has already reached this conclusion unanimously three times. Thank you. Tonight, we need to start talking about the process and the timeline to have our planning commission look at AG1 standards along with staff and the community so that we can put together new language together that will enhance and protect Milton and not put us at risk.
Thank you.
Our next comment comes from Joan Borzalary.
Hold on one second, council member with a question.
I was going to get to that, once we got to that fourteenth one, I was going to let the council decide and direct whether or not they received. We will, we'll hold the ones that we receive at this point in a separate pile, and then we'll get to those after the first thirteen.
Sudi, I'm in support, but not speaking.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Our next speaker is Jack Linden.
Good evening, city council members and planning commission members. My name is Jack Linden, I'm at 14810 East Bluff Road in Milton, and I'm speaking in favor of the, both the conservation subdivision ordinance and the proposed changes to AG1. My first comment is that I've been particularly unimpressed with the process so far. It has been encumbered by far too much conflict and far too little constructive dialogue, and that really aggravates me. I'd like to, I like the fact that we're starting, appear to be starting that constructive dialogue tonight, I hope that's what happens with this meeting. And I hope that we can figure out ways to enhance both conventional subdivision design as well as allow for the possibility, and we'll emphasize what Scott has already said, the current draft calls it a optional, an option for the community. I hope we continue to allow that discussion to occur because that's just one other way to preserve and enhance the rural nature of this community. I'd like to say that previous comments about the consultants is incorrect. I know those consultants well, and I know what they've said. They have said that it's difficult for Milton because we don't have a sewer system, and without a sewer system, these kinds of conservation subdivisions can be difficult. But at no, at no time have any of them said that it is inappropriate for the city of Milton. Thank you.
Sudi, please call the next person.
Our next speaker is Francia Linden.
My name is Francia Linden, I live at 414810 East Bluff Road. You guys are going to think this is a one-two act, but really, we didn't talk about it at all. This is totally spontaneous. Anyway, I'm speaking in favor of a CSO this evening. As a member of Milton Grows Green, I know this organization has done a lot more than pay lip service to conservation. Our meetings are public, the CSO has been on the agenda more times than I can remember. I believe the planning commission was aware of our interest in the CSO for months. To say that we somehow sidestepped the standards of transparency is not true. To also call our request to discuss our findings in a public meeting a quote "eleventh hour end run" close quote does not fit and is insulting. Perhaps the only thing you may not have known already is that we were able to come up with some concrete suggestions on how to modify the CSO to address some of the concerns that the community has raised. With regards to the CSO, our process has always been to examine public comments, objections, and multiple CSO drafts, and to offer suggestions that achieve the goals only a CSO has the potential to deliver. This process has involved workshops, multiple discussions with the city's consultants, community development department, and our own legal counsel. The purpose in bringing our efforts before city council and the planning commission tonight is precisely to make the city, to make these findings transparent and to offer what we think could be workable answers. Solutions only can come with an expressed interest, when an expressed interest of people who have spent considerable time studying what works have an opportunity to a rational dialogue without being shut down. The term "shut down" here refers to
Two minutes has elapsed.
What I see has a, as an orchestrated campaign to disinformation and political hype by those opposed to the ordinance and whose sole purpose is to silence any meaningful dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Sudi, if you'll please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Stacy O'Neal.
Good evening, I'm Stacy O'Neal, and I wanted to speak in favor of the conservation subdivision ordinance tonight. First of all, I want to thank the council people and the planning commission and everybody who has been involved to date with the process. We believe that a conservation subdivision is very much in keeping with the rural look of Milton, and also very forward-thinking in terms of preserving our natural resources. There are several points I want to touch on. First are the rights of land ownership. The rights of land ownership are possession, control, enjoyment, exclusion, and disposition. The idea that buildable land should be acquiesced or conserved is contrary to our bills of rights. Land cannot be taken from an owner without payment. Current owners do not have rights to make dictates or requirements on the property of other landowners with regard to viewable green space. If it is suggested that vacant land be turned over to become deeded green space, consider the suggestion of taking a quarter to a third of every property owner's land and making it become part of neighborhood green space. Current residents do not have an inherent right to preserve a setting where it impacts another landowner's rights to their, to use their property to its highest and best use, as long as it is not without detriment to the neighboring properties. Public input, I feel like this has been an ongoing conversation for several months with many meetings, everybody has been invited to come. Density neutral, the intent of the ordinance is not to bring more density, it is to preserve and protect natural resources, to avoid mass clearcutting of land and work more in tandem with topography, allowing smaller lots in some instances so as to preserve mature trees, streams,
Two minutes has elapsed.
Other bodies of water. My comments are also on record.
Ms. O'Neal, would you mind, and I'm not sure if you had stated your address for the record?
Oh, yes. My address is 5566 Benton Woods Drive.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cleveland Slater.
Hi, my name is Cleveland Slater, reside at 13670 Bethany Road. Been a resident since 1997, before the city of Milton was formed. The conservation subdivision ordinance should be denied, it's poorly drafted, it's not right for our community. I don't know how many years have been spent trying to get a workable draft. Fulton County will not issue the permits that are required. Georgia EPD will issue permits for subdivisions with more than thirty homes. We don't know if an individual permit will be issued that would allow conservation subdivisions with ten to thirty-three homes. We had a consultant who, as far as I know, still has not been able to answer that question from the emails that were shared with us in his discussions with the Georgia EPD. The ordinance as drafted, there's evidence of collusion between at least one landowner and a wastewater utility company. Other emails that were requested by the city attorney understand are forthcoming, we don't know what those emails will reveal. Sometimes, you don't know what's missing, it's not obvious until you see the part that was removed. And the emails here between a utility company, a landowner, they strike, they strike a requirement that the yield plan shall be governed by onsite sewage treatment requirements. And that's where your density neutral leaves the ordinance, when you do not require the ordinance, do not require the yield plan to recognize restrictions of sanitary sewer requirements. For a number of technical reasons, a number of aesthetic reasons, this is not right for the city of Milton. I respectfully request that you deny this ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Sudi, if you'll please call the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Matthew Mitchell.
Good evening, my name is Matthew Mitchell, I live at 1750 Providence Farms Lane. Beginning to feel like Groundhog Day, it just keeps coming back, but, um, first, I do want to thank you guys, I mean, the amount of work that you put into this and the time and the dedication and the interest is really remarkable, and I love that, and I love the fact that you guys are this interested in how the future of Milton shakes out. And I completely understand if we don't do something, that the property values we have will decline as we start to look like Gwinnett or East Cobb or anywhere else around us. What we have is unique, and that's what drives the property values that all of these owners are so eager to preserve. Given that, I thoroughly believe that it's possible that there is a CSO that could be the solution. I don't think this CSO is the solution. I'm just going to kind of do a FedEx commercial and blast through a bunch of things that I've got on the surface. First, it should be about conservation, this is more about green space. There's been a lot of discussion about how that's defined. Within the new CSO, it talks about putting back in place one principal dwelling unit per acre, which is essentially what we have now. It also talks about how this is a, an option, or it is an available way to develop. It's got things like it requires a rural-style entrance to the subdivision. I don't know how that's conservation. I think that it references areas large enough for efficient farm operations. I don't know how that's relevant, I don't know how much that we have. It talks about connecting neighboring communities, schools, and businesses to reduce reliance on auto travel, that's a great pipe dream, but as an architect and a planner, it doesn't work. Adding community parks and community facilities that serve as focal points and public gathering, that's not conservation. It says it's the preferred method, well, if it's the preferred method, then it's not required, and it doesn't do anybody any good. It requires a state design to have ten percent of their buildable area for outdoor recreation uses, are you kidding me? Swimming pools, tennis courts, decks, paved terraces?
Two minutes has elapsed.
Already? Okay. I wasn't talking fast enough, but I guess that's the point. I think there's a tremendous amount in here that needs to be looked at.
Okay, thank you. Sudi, if you'll please call the next speaker.
The next speaker is Lauren Holmes.
I'm Lauren Holmes, 13900 Haygood Road. I agree with everything Laura Bentley has said, make it a little bit shorter. This is in a response to the last planning commission and the last city council meeting that I wanted to speak about. And let's start with the myth that the majority of people in Milton are in favor of a CSO. The majority of landowners in the city of Milton have no idea what a CSO is and the impact it will have. If the city really wanted to know what an open road landowner was in favor of, they should have done a mail-out and asked them what they thought. What I'd really like to know is why we have three paid consultants who have said that the CSO in the city of Milton is not viable, and some city council members still want to move forward with this. It is a waste of taxpayers' dollars. As far as the change in the text amendments, I oppose all of them. The city is abusing their power by the taking of land, changing setbacks, and making the land unbuildable is not acceptable. The one thing I am in favor of are subdivisions that have the look and feel of being rural, no curbs and gutters, narrower streets, and larger lots. And for anyone to say a CSO or adding to the setbacks will raise property values is wrong, no one can make that claim. Thank you.
Sudi, please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Lance Villard.
Yeah, I'm going to wait on opportunity at this time, because these issues are good. But the one comment I really want to make
Excuse me, sir, just for the record, would you mind, and your address, please?
And what?
Your address, just name your address for the record.
Yes, 2900 Grassview Drive. And I just, I'm kind of new to all these issues here, so I just wanted to come in and observe. And I want to give some perspective to this. I've lived all over Atlanta, I'm from New York, and everywhere I've lived in Atlanta, I had to move somewhere else. So one of the reasons I came to Milton is a product and an outcome of something that really didn't go right somewhere else. I've lived in South Atlanta, I've lived in Buckhead, I've owned properties, I've rented out properties, and what attracted me to Milton was the integrity. And I want to hear what other speakers have to say, because if that's being compromised in some way, then then you're just repeating the same mistakes that everybody else is making. And I think that's a real concern, not only about the substance of the issue, but even, I'm hearing issues about the process and the integrity of the process. So as a newcomer to this area, I hope that you don't compromise the integrity of what you're doing. And I've seen this in Florida, I've seen this in other states too. And I don't even see any Keep Milton Pure signs anymore, like when I first was looking around to buy here. So that's just a thought for your consideration, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, and welcome to Milton, we're glad you're here.
I hope so.
I mean that in all sincerity. Sudi?
Our next speaker is Heather Creeran.
That was perfect, by the way, and it's not an easy name, so thank you. Good evening, Heather Creeran, I live at 325 Taylor Glen Drive, and I want to thank you all. And I want to keep this simple, I'd like to focus on my three main objectives tonight. First and foremost is to kill this CSO immediately, once and for all. It's bad for Milton, for all the reasons that you've heard repeatedly, but the city council continues to keep it on life support, even after the planning commission has denied it, rejected it unanimously three times. And I've struggled for months to try to understand why that is, which leads me to objective number two. Based on the emails that were recently exposed, I'm requesting that the city attorney, mayor, and city council launch a full, formal, and independent investigation of the CSO process and the consultants that the city hired to assist us. These emails are shocking, they're embarrassing, they make some of the people in this room look bad, and they make Milton look bad. At a minimum, they raise huge questions about conflict of interest and lack of transparency in the process, and the motivations of many of the players involved. These emails suggest that our consultant and other consultants determined nearly a year ago that this was not a fit for Milton. These emails suggest that the consultant, the city hired to help draft the CSO, was also consulting for a major Milton landowner who has a significant financial interest in getting this CSO passed. They're serious questions, and they need to be answered. And finally, objective number three. Send the AG1 modifications to the planning commission and let them work on coming up with the right solutions for Milton. Having been involved in this process for the last several months, coming to meetings or watching those on video that I couldn't attend, it's clear our planning commission is terrific. They have great ideas about how to help Milton move forward while retaining its unique rural beauty and character. And I want to thank them all for what they've done and commend them on how they've handled all of this. And finally, in closing, one last time, I want to reiterate, objective number one, which is to the city council, kill the CSO. One more thing, one more time, to the city council, kill the CSO and do it now. Stop dragging it out, you're meeting on Monday, let's take care of this once and for all. Thank you very much.
Sudi?
Our next speaker is Tony Otita.
Yes, my name is Tony Otita, I live at 325 Taylor Glen Drive in Milton. And I've been here for all these meetings too, and I'm always puzzled as to, you know, why the city council continues to drag this along. And I think these emails that have come out in conjunction with what the planning commission has recommended, really raise questions about why you guys haven't killed this, why you guys haven't even voted on this. Something here doesn't pass the smell test to me. And I have a sneaky suspicion, just kind of something in me, that no matter what is said here, you may very well pass this thing anyway. And I want to remind you that you have a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of Milton to do the right thing. Thank you.
Sudi?
Next speaker is Kim Horn.
Good evening, my name is Kim Horn, I live at 415 Wade Glen Court, and I'm not going to take up too much time because I wholeheartedly agree with the last two speakers, Laura Bentley, Mr. Slater, that, one, the CSO needs to be denied. When it's on the next cycle, I would hope that city council would do the right thing as the planning commission has done three times before them and denied the CSO. We've, we've all believed that CSO was not right for Milton, but in light of these recent emails, seeing what the experts have said, it's clearly not something that is a viable option for Milton at this time, or in the future. I'm glad that we're going to be able to talk once again about the AG1 standards and enhancing those, and I would hope that it would come before the planning commission and, you know, vet out all the issues before it goes, and not just a text amendment, that it becomes something they put on the agenda that goes through all the, through the proper processes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Julie Zoner Bailey.
Good evening, my name is Julie Zoner Bailey, I live at 255 Hickory Flat Road. Two things, I'd like to focus on the need to deny the CSO. Secondly, the need to send the proposed AG1 standards back to the planning commission to allow them to work thoroughly with staff and the community. The proposed changes for AG1 have not been vetted with the community. As to the CSO, here's the reasons I believe and many believe that this should be denied. The planning commission denied it, they reviewed it thoroughly, they recommended denial three times. Secondly, density neutrality in the yield plan. The CSO was not density neutral, it's not even close, and we all said at the very beginning, if you're ever going to have a CSO, it must be density neutral. This is not. A true, true yield plan would be required, and it's not. Wastewater treatment systems, this ordinance introduces large community septic systems into areas of Milton where today they're not permitted. It is the introduction of private sewer. Everybody that currently serves the city of Milton has said, we wouldn't have private sewer, we wouldn't have sewer extension. This effectively would allow for sewer to be extended. That shouldn't happen. Financial liability to the city and therefore the citizens of Milton. Community septic systems do fail, the EPD said so, the experts said so, the developers said so, and the city said so. We need to listen to all these folks, the city of Milton was supposed to be free of expanded sewer, and we also have a financial liability that would come with that. Please be financially responsible and do Please be financially responsible and do not allow for the CSO to be passed. Green space within the CSO, it is not appropriately defined. There are inadequate buffers. Landowners that would be impacted by the CSO are not protected. The public input process within the CSO was not appropriate. High-density lots of roughly 10,000 square feet is hardly rural. The application to sites as small as only 20 acres is inappropriate. Lot standards allow for houses to be too close. The trails could be in the buffer, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The CSO should be denied. Secondly, with regards to the AG1 enhancements, there's a number of things within it that shouldn't be, and there's a number of things that aren't in it that need to be.
Two minutes has elapsed.
Please allow the AG1 standards to go back to the planning commission respectfully. Thank you.
Sudi?
Our next speaker is Bill Bailey.
Bill Bailey, I reside at 255 HICKORY FLAT ROAD. I agree, obviously agree publicly with my wife, but wanted to get that on the record. I looked up the conservation regulations, other than what you're looking at now, and I spoke with Clint McNeil with the Georgia Conservancy. He told me the out-of-pocket cost for me to put my property in an easement would be $30,000. I think there's a couple of hundred parcels in Milton that you're talking about requiring them to do this. $600,000 that goes to other people does not help the city of Milton. And I know that this would damage my property financially. And under the Constitution, private property should not be taken or damaged for public purposes. I believe taking my land, or requiring me to do this, damages my property. And as far as the taking, I know you've discussed that already, and if you take a small percentage, it's quote "legally not taking." But if I'm required to take a portion of my property, have it surveyed as a separate parcel, and that put in a conservation easement, then 100% of that parcel will be taken without compensation. I do not believe this whole document has been thawed out on a legal basis. Maybe we could get an opinion from the state attorney general on this, of what taking is if you have a separate piece of property that you're taking 100% of. Thank you very much. Please, please deny the CSO, and send the, send everything back to the planning commission on the modifications. Thank you.
Okay, Sudi?
Our next speaker is Curtis Mills.
Yeah, and let's, yeah, we did have-
I guess we need to get the opinion, so we've got two that were received after-
Yeah, let me ask the council, we've got two that, you know, originally the intent was to take the public comment at one time. We had two folks walk in late and submit a card, is the council, two cards, four minutes total, is council okay hearing those? Joe?
I've been coming to meetings for over six years, we've always allowed people to hand in their cards late, so I don't see why this is any different.
Okay, you guys good with a couple more? All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Mills.
My name is Curtis Mills, I reside at 16355 BURMINGHAM HIGHWAY on about 40 acres, and my place of business is the Birmingham Crossroads in the green building behind the Wells Fargo branch. It used to be called the Old Birmingham Hotel. It was built in 1860, and I also have the northwest corner of the crossroads where Bison's store used to be, and now is Wilburn Rudy's. I liked the concept of the CSO an awful lot, was hopeful that it might develop into something that would be usable, but watching all the iterations of the CSO as it's developed, I have some issues with it, and I'd just like to bump through that. May I pass around some pictures? And I'll refer to this, I'm a Georgia grad, I had to guess on the math, so if it doesn't, make it all the way around, just take, take my word for it. I have a couple of issues, some of my original issues had been addressed, and I won't touch on those, but fundamentally, the way the yield plan is determined, I don't think gets to the original density neutrality intention for a subdivision. I'll give you an example. On my land, I bought a piece of adjoining property from David Chatham, he had it perk-tested a long time ago. The front 10 acres will only perk four, six houses. So absent a perk test, that would be, and there are no steep slopes or water in that 10 acres, so that would be 10 houses. You all have to decide if it's okay to add one more car of traffic to Milton's roads for any reason. I don't think it is, no matter how many roundabouts you put in.
Two minutes has elapsed.
Oh my goodness, okay.
Sudi, do you mind?
My main issue is this buffer, and I'm Inspector Dreyfus of Pink Panther on it. That's a 60-foot rural view shed buffer implemented by community development, and we're talking about allowing as little as 50. It'd be funny, except I have to look at that every day when I pull out of my driveway.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And our final comment comes from Walter Recook.
My name's Walter Recook, I live at 615 Scarlet Oak Trail. On the conservation subdivision, the CSO, again, I'm not in favor of it, I think I would be if we were a sewer community. I think I've taken a couple of the council members and some planning commission members to a community I developed, which we won an award for best design and planned subdivision nation, as a beautiful subdivision. And many of the attributes, I would hope that our community could possibly implement. But again, looking at what we're trying to do, I just don't see those things being implemented. And again, trying to go with some type of master sewer system, being with septic, is just not a good solution. I just don't see that as something that we wanna get into. I don't think we wanna get into sewer extension. And I really believe that the people that move into Milton are looking for larger lots. I don't think they're wanting to look at smaller lots, they're not looking at 5,000 square foot lots, they're looking typically to be on one-acre lots. And I think that's really what we're trying to force people into, and I think if somebody wants to be in a smaller home, they're probably gonna wind up being on a larger lot. Back to the AG1, if you are looking at changing it, going back to, you know, taking 10% of the land, ladies and gentlemen, let's stop taking people's land, and let's really look at what makes a community look great. Look at street trees, look at berms, look at other things that make architectural sense from the standpoint of landscaping. Guys, we, guys and girls, we cannot keep on saying that we're gonna take things, and just by taking land, it makes things look better.
Two minutes has elapsed.
You make things look better by landscaping and planting, and that's what makes things look better. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is that all public comment, Sudi?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With something, Rob, would you mind passing me that basket right there? And Peyton, if you wouldn't mind passing me that one? As I said when we started, this is a more informal meeting, and I know we're all sitting here, we've got all these snacks, and I'd like if the staff could pass this over to the audience. Everybody take something while we're, while we're sitting here, so. Okay, the city attorney's back. Can I remember? 10, procedure? I gave the audience snacks, is that okay? Okay, Sudi, if you'll-
We have fish crackers over here, please.
All right, Sudi, if you'll please call our agenda item.
Our agenda item this evening is a joint work session of the city council and planning commission to discuss the conservation subdivision ordinance, rural design ordinance, and associated zoning text amendments.
Okay. We'll start this out, and, you know, not sure exactly where this is gonna go, that's kinda why we had this meeting, to kinda put some things out on the table. The conservation subdivision ordinance, as the one that you guys looked at and has been presented to us, we are scheduled what, to hear it the first presentation the next week, and then the, to vote on it on the 7th of December, which was the direction the council gave at our last meeting. Is that, is that still the intent of the council? Everybody good with that? So, you know, that being said, is, not sure if there's any discussion on that, or if anybody wants to say anything on that, you're welcome to. Just, Bill?
Just one point. It's presented as an optional method of development, and I think that's one thing that's been overlooked or misrepresented. Just wanna make it clear, it's a preferred method, and it's optional.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Yeah, so let's just be more clear than that, Bill, because when you say preferred method, that implies something to me. My understanding, the way I was looking at the ordinance, was that it was optional, which meant that the person who was selling their property had to agree that that was something that they wanted to do, or that some, that their property would be used for the developer, you know, has a voice in that as well. So these are things that we're not forcing anyone to do, that they're discussed, they're just on the table as part of, you know, the regular way of doing business and doing development. So I would agree.
Okay. Any comments, planning commission?
I would say if you look at the yield plan on the current doc, the current document that you have before you, which we emailed before, you can call it an option, you can call it whatever, but if you look at the details of what homes could be yielded based on the soil, there's quite a big bonus for it to happen. And I know Noel sent an email in June summarizing our comments, and we sent an email in September with the same problems that we've had from the very beginning. And I was hoping tonight we're gonna talk more about the AG1 rural design standards, because I think we can reach some middle ground on a lot of that stuff, but the CSO, I mean, we've done that over the last 18 months, and we don't think it's a fit. Even if it's an option or not, there's still a lot of issues involved in it.
You know, to present it as an option, that means it's on the books as a usable tool for the city of Milton and the development community and the landowners. And that contains, for me, the biggest issue, is the fact that you're prepared to accept the liability for a waste management solution. To date, the city of Milton has not been in the waste management business. As we know, our own city attorney probably will attest to the fact that, in his experience with a nearby county, in some additional work that he does, that Forsyth County has taken on some liability that I think we should be frightened by, because there have been failures in their, in their experience with it. And for us to suggest that we're prepared to take that on, that's a question I think should go to the taxpayers or our community, because ultimately that cost will, when those failures exist, or those failures happen, and the neighborhood isn't prepared to support it, who's gonna bear that expense? Well, the expense will be borne by the taxpayer. So to suggest that it's an option without taking into measure the fact that we would take on that potential liability, I think is irresponsible.
Well, I think you're assuming that we didn't take that into consideration.
No, no, I'm just saying that's the planning commission, or my position on that, and I'm just encouraging you to consider that as well.
Okay. Anybody else? Have you met?
I mean, we kinda got to this point in a lot of ways because of the, what I call the AG1 sprawl that is hitting our community. You know, the AG1, the spirit of what that design is, is an agricultural design, but, you know, as Paul Moore mentioned, the planning commission, I think the city has lost its way with regards to current development, and everybody tried to emphasize the exact subdivision on Birmingham Highway that came in, that has the curb cutters and the curb gutters and the sidewalks right up there on Birmingham Highway. And that's where we are now, that's the zoning that we have now. The challenge is, is that a lot of the development that's happening, especially in the northern end of the city, is taking away those beautiful areas of our community, and conservation is disappearing by houses that are being sprawled out because of zoning that makes them spread out. Not everybody wants that, and so we're looking for options that come to that conclusion. So while we wanna make sure that we know what we do is right, we still wanna make sure there's an economic viability, that we have options for what it is we're trying to do. And looking at those options, we only have things that we do have. I hear the point on the Forsyth County issue, I think that there were processes in place by Forsyth County that they didn't manage upfront that led them to those failures, because there's plenty of other places that haven't had those failures, and we need to look at how they've done those things. So we have a lot of people in this community that can find a way to, I think, have an option, that doesn't mean they necessarily have to do that. And at the same time, if we wanna reach the goal of trying to preserve those things that are valuable to us, like our green space, like our fields, like our horse pastures, the AG1 answer, right now, as it currently stands, doesn't provide that. What's more is that other ideas of other communities that they have adopted don't wanna be considered because of the challenges that we face as a community of trying to come together to be open to new ideas. It's a hard place to be. I mean, this is a very difficult decision. I think the spirit of our community is that we all want the same thing, which is good. I think we all wanna see conservation, we came here for a reason, but the challenge we face is that economics are happening to us, and the real question is whether or not we wanna make sure that we don't become Dunwoody, as Mayor you've said before in the past. So-
I wouldn't say Dunwoody.
Well, I would, you know, it's a subdivision sprawl, it's what's happening on the northern end. So we got to this point here, the question is, is are we going to come together to find a solution that creates that? And, you know, growth is a challenging position to be in, but if we don't consider new ideas, I worry that we're gonna lose that, that which is best of us. We don't have, right now, no way to preserve our historical landscapes, or our historical structures. So, in my mind, that's, that's why I'm in favor. I've seen pastures disappear, and I'm tired of it.
Okay. Anybody else on CSO? If not, we'll, again, and everyone will have time to make more public comment next, until we hear it on December 7th, email, come to the meetings and whatnot, so it's, we'll move forward, and everybody's like, on that, Bill?
Just restate something that's in the proposed ordinance here, and it's the purpose, and I'll read it here, a couple sentences. "The purpose of this article is to provide additional flexibility in subdivision design to ensure preservation of green space and to promote and protect the rural character of Milton in those areas and districts so designated in the comprehensive land use plan," which some of us here participated in several years ago, "and the zoning regulations. The purpose and intent for the conservation subdivision regulations also include comprehensive land use plan, conservation plan, prevent flooding and erosion, provide green space suitable for agricultural purposes, conserve scenic terrain, encourage street designs that promote public safety in reducing traffic speeds." And that's something I think everybody can relate to. "Preserve native vegetation, aquatic and terrestrial wildlife, and conserve, or preserve sites of historic cultural and architectural and archaeological value. Promote less sprawling form of development within the tract proposed for subdivision that encourages a sense of community by providing parks and community facilities that serve as focal points and public gathering places in the neighborhood." And I think that's, I think that's important, to read that and to understand what our, what our goal is here, our objection, or objective, not our objection. And I think we're all serving in the best interest of the city. I think some folks, we all haven't agreed on the path to get there, but I think the overriding document that, that has guided us thus far is our comprehensive land use plan. Next year, we're gonna be reviewing it again, and I think these initiatives that we're proposing here, the conservation subdivision and the rural design, are an attempt to validate and reinforce the commitment that we made almost nine years ago in developing this comprehensive land use plan. use plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments on CSO? All right, thanks. And I just just want to make a statement as we move into our next item here. You know, it's interesting, it's been nine years now that we've been a city. And to to Lance's point, it's you get folks that move here, and you have a fresh look at what you have here. And, you know, talking to a lot of people and everybody's concerns, everybody has pretty much the same concern. They love the way things are, and they like the way it looks, and that's why they moved here. But it's also kind of ironic to to talk, because everybody's perspective is different to, you know, somebody that moved here, you know, six months ago, a year ago, they've got one thing in mind. Somebody that's been here five years, they want it to be like it was when they were five years, you know, like it was five years ago. You moved here 20 years ago, you want it to be like it was 20 years ago, and so on and so on. So, you know, it's kind of interesting. Everybody has a, everybody tends to want the same thing, but it's all a different perspective. So, you know, that being said, I think what we all want to do is kind of have a win-win. There's a, you know, there's a balance between property rights, there's a balance between what the citizens want and what works out economically. It's interesting, you go back nine years ago, or seven years ago, or whatever, and the big concern when we became a city was to keep our AG1 zoning. Eighty-five percent or so of Milton did not have sewer. And so, everybody's concern was to keep sewer out and keep the AG1 zoning or the one acre lots. And so, you know, everybody wanted that. Well, what's happened is, over time, and for five years or so, everything pretty much died. But now, as it's, the economy's coming around, and we're such a desirable place where everybody wants to move, it pushes people to sell their land and build one acre home sites. And now, all of a sudden, folks are seeing the one acre home sites go up, and, you know, they're concerned about that. So, it's it's all in a different perspective. You know, several years ago, everybody said, hey, if we have that, we're fine. Don't let it change. So, you know, we've got to continually look at it. And to me, my goal, and, you know, several months ago, kind of compiled a list of all the tools, if you want to call it, that the council would come up with and staff, and put it all in a list to keep in mind the things that we can use to try to meet those goals that are reasonable and work with with everybody. So, you know, these discussions are a good, good way to, you know, we're moving in that direction to come up with a with something, a happy balance. So, again, but I just, my whole point is to make sure everybody realizes, everybody has a different position and a different perspective on it. So, we appreciate it. And, you know, whatever decisions we do ultimately make are not going to, no one's going to agree with them 100%. But, you know, hopefully, we can come up with something that's best for our community. So, anyways, let's talk about the rural design ordinance.
Do you want the staff to make a presentation? You want the planning, this item was before the planning commission at their last meeting, and they did take action on it. We can start with either a staff presentation on what the rural design ordinance is, and then potentially hear from the planning commission as to what they did, what the recommendation is after their debate. Or you can start with the end in mind, if you'd like, and you can hear from the planning commission first. And we can supplement any of their feedback. So, I'll leave that up to what your...
I'd like if maybe staff can go ahead and just present, you know, in abbreviated form. And then also, you know, you guys have looked at it, and then the planning commission's recommendations, and then we can go from there.
Then I will turn it over to Kathy Field for that presentation.
I'm going to stand up here, so I can see everyone. Okay. Let me just give you some background. We originally looked at making some changes to the AG1 zoning ordinance. And so, we were looking at amendments to the zoning text. And then, in advice of council, the suggestion, the recommendation was made that we remove those recommended changes from the zoning ordinance into the subdivision ordinance. So, what I'm going to be talking about is section 50-162, rural design. And the idea is that this will lie within the subdivision ordinance as opposed to the zoning. A little technicality, but I just wanted to set the stage here in terms of what we're talking about and where it's going to lie. So, it's changes to the subdivision regulations. And having said that, I want to give you the highlights of what we're proposing, and then we can certainly discuss the details. But first of all, it's 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 based on the AG1 development standards, to which we've made some changes. Secondly, it excludes minor plats. And as you know, a minor plat is three parcels or less. So, that this rural design would apply to anything over three parcels, which is essentially four acres, I believe. Is that right, Robin? Minor plat is about four acres. So, for, so anything, assuming that it's not a minor plat, would be approximately over four acres that we're talking about here. So, there are three major parts to this. Part one is, we've changed the rural view shed. Currently, the rural view shed, and this is for exterior streets, for lots that are along exterior streets of subdivisions, the current requirements are a 60-foot setback. About 60 feet, 40 feet is undisturbed, and the other 20 feet can be disturbed, in that you could put your septic system in that, for instance. So, that's currently 60 feet. We propose changing it to 100 feet. And about 100 feet, 75 feet would be undisturbed, and then there would be 25 feet that would allow to be disturbed. But you'd still, all buildings would have to be out of that last 25 feet, but you could put your underground septic. We moved the front setback on interior streets from 60 to 20. So, what that means is that if, again, if there is a parcel that's on an exterior street of a subdivision, and that's within the subdivision but on an exterior street, and we're requiring that house structure to be back 100 feet from the exterior street, the current setback on the frontage on the interior street is 60. We're reducing that to 20. So, that in essence, you've moved that house from the exterior street, from the rear, up closer to the inside interior street. So, you'd never change the size of the lot. You're just changing setbacks. Rather than a 60 and a 60, it's 100 and a 20. So, it's still the same amount of setback, but but moved up more toward the the interior street as opposed to the exterior street.
So, Kathy, just clarity on that. Right now, you have 120 total...
Correct.
...setbacks currently, and the new one is 120 total as well?
Correct.
Just to make sure there's no difference.
And Robin does have a, something that she could pass out that shows that exactly. The rural view shed also requires, provides language that allows for a pasture. And this is something that we felt strongly about, that if someone had a pasture, that we wouldn't require them to landscape and put in an undisturbed buffer, that that pasture is really part of the rural landscape and therefore should be allowed. And we also require 360 architecture, which means that we would want the city architect to look at any buildings that are along exterior streets to make sure indeed that, again, that the architecture is something that we feel is appropriate. So, that's, essentially, those are the highlights for the expansion of the rural view shed. I'm next moving on to the next issue that we've addressed, and that is subdivision entrances in terms of their design. First, we would require a more simple design for entrance signs. We would allow only knee walls where topography is problematic. We would, we would require all gate houses to be set back 100 feet. And we would not allow any water features as part of the entrance designs. And the intent here was to create a much more simplistic entrance from the exterior street into the subdivision, again, to protect that rural type design. Lastly, we are under the topic of conservation areas. We would propose that a minimum of 10% of a subdivision's gross acreage be preserved as a conservation area. And lastly, that these areas, these conservation areas must be protected with a permanent conservation easement held by a third party, whether that's a land conservation trust or the city. So, essentially, those are the highlights of what we have included under section 50-162, rural design. And we are prepared to go into the specifics.
Okay, before, yeah, before we go to, is there any questions or comments from council? Bill?
A couple of them. Your last point there, the 10% conserve area, have you considered allocating some of that percentage as a buffer on a main road in front of a subdivision like that?
Oh, you mean the defined rural view shed, to use that as part of the 10% requirement? It's not in here, but certainly, we could look at that. Yes.
Perhaps that would assuage some of those that would consider the 10% a taking. It may tend to enhance, obviously, the frontage along any subdivision.
Sure. That's a point well made.
Second question is, what was the reason, and perhaps the city attorney can address it, for moving all of these requirements from chapter 64 to chapter 50? Chapter 64 is a zoning chapter, and chapter 50 is a subdivision.
That was, that's on me. All of that's on me. The the reason for that is because, at least right now, Milton does not have what other, some of the jurisdictions have, which is a unified development code. You typically have your zoning land use code, and then you have your development regulations, and they're two different constructs. The way this was going is it was blending the two concepts. I didn't want that. I want us to have a land use code that defines and dictates land use that's governed by the zoning procedures law of the state of Georgia. And then I want us to have conservation regs, which is different, which are candidly, they are more streamlined. They don't have quite the exact procedural protocols to adopt. And so, I wanted to keep those concepts separate, at least until we have a unified development code, which may be in the works. It's a very laudable thing. I like it, but we don't have it yet. That's that's the reason.
Thank you. Perhaps going back to the first question, is the 10% conservation area set aside. Ken, can you comment on the, that point?
Question.
Whether it constitutes a taking and define, give us the definition of a taking as it relates to state code?
Right. Well, you know, there are a, you know, first of all, to the extent that individuals get frustrated with the use of their power or the use of their land based upon land development regulations. All land development regulations affect the use of land, and therefore affect the value of land. We have all sorts of buffers, not the least of which, and the ones that got the most play, was riparian buffers, you know, literally 75 feet in some instances, setbacks near streams and waterways. Have those been upheld as legal and constitutional? Yes. Are they constituted taking? Not always. They can. They can if a buffer imposes a restriction on property that renders it unavailable for any economic use, or any viable economic use, which of course, by the way, is why we also have another construct in Georgia law called a variance. And that is one of the mechanisms of a variance is intended to ameliorate against the taking. So, the point here is, is to the extent that there is any sort of a buffer imposed, it's likely going to be upheld as legal and constitutional. I would, of course, want there to be a variance provision in there, to the extent that it does in fact render a piece of property devoid of any economic use. But it's likely going to be upheld as constitutional and legal. It also doesn't really work that you can take a piece of property that is a whole, divide it up based upon the regulation, take one little snippet and say, you've deprived me of economic use in that little snippet. There's case law directly on point. That's not the way land use works. It would be the whole property, then divide it up pursuant to the regulation, and then we'll see if there was in fact a taking of that property. So, I mean, I'm comfortable, if this was a construct where I felt like we were about to adopt something that was unconstitutional, I think you should expect that I would say so.
And I got a question on this as well.
Go ahead, Matt.
Sorry to interrupt. We're looking at this in the context of the whole, of all of these working together with what's before us. You know, we have the the rural design in the context of being one portion of the subdivision ordinance with the CSO, right? And the setbacks of the CSO, if I remember right, are much less stringent. What I got, it's a 30 feet for large lots, basic conservation design, rear buffer 20 feet, 40 feet, depending on traditional, or cottage or large lots. You know, so that's that's far less, I think. And with regards to the stringency of that, and so, by providing those options with the two contexts, would that then still give us leeway from being considered taking if someone has an option?
Again, that's another factor. I mean, presumably, if there's an option, then you have exercised your option to pursue it.
Right.
So, obviously, that's one factor in favor. I mean, but at the end of the day, my analysis is always going to be the same. I'm going to look and see whether or not the buffer is such that it renders a property deprived of all economically viable or beneficial use of the property.
Right.
And I'm going to want to make sure that the government has a rational basis for imposing it. And what is the rational basis here? You know, the council has not spoken yet, but I would presume it's going to be aesthetics to sort of preserve the the look and feel of the city of Milton. I want to get, that's that's y'all's issue. I'm just kind of making that up is is what I would see typically in a statement of a policy or objective.
Okay. Anybody else?
Bill? One last question for Ken. As regards the duty or the the charge or the authority of a governing body such as a city council or county commission, what authority do we have as far as changing development standards?
Significant. I mean, with respect to development regulations, you have, I mean, significant. Only, the only thing that I would say that would probably, you know, be a check on your power would be just constitutional considerations and making sure it's within the scope of your charter. So...
Would you consider, I know the question has come up about longstanding property owners out here, and time to, or an opportunity to sell their their property. And in the meantime, development standards have changed. Is there any legal recourse for a property owner?
Right. So, so what that triggers, that fact pattern you just raised, triggers in my mind is the is the concept of what's called grandfathering or vesting. You know, that is a very complex factual-driven analysis, whether somebody has a vested right to do something with land. There's a lot of triggers with respect to vesting. For instance, one trigger with respect to vesting is, is I have pulled permits from the government, and therefore, I have a right to develop my property consistent with those active permits. And you don't have the right, in the meantime, to change regulations to thwart my ability to do that. That's a very elementary, generic example of vesting, but that is an example. But absent a vested right, how about I answer it that way? Absent a grandfather or vested right, the reality is, is that rules, development regulations change. They do. And the public policy in Georgia is, is that those members of the governing authority or the council in in office have the right to do that. Otherwise, if it wasn't that way, then property would simply be locked in stasis.
Okay. Anybody else?
Kathy, could you give a clarification when you said no water features are permitted at entrance of the subdivision? What actually were you talking about there?
Yeah, I hear, sometimes you'll see waterfalls, for instance. And not to say that they're bad or good, but if you want to create a more rural entrance, we thought something that was less is better than something with large signs or monuments, with waterfalls, with gatehouses up front. The idea was is to minimize the entranceway. And I guess the best example that we could think of was the six year old entrance, that type of entrance is what we had in mind.
Okay. So, you're not talking about if you, if there was a pond or something at the front, you're really talking about at the very entrance, anything that you're going to build out, you don't put water features?
Right. Keep it simple.
Okay.
Just on that point as well, if there were any questions, if someone had an idea like bentwater in Cherokee County has a great, you know, old water wheel, something like that, you know, that might work. I mean, it's just, if they ever, if someone had an idea that they want to present a variance, but still be allowed... still be allowed for them to go first, right? Okay. Just process wise.
And again, you know, it goes back to my comment about everybody having a different perspective, you know. My idea of rural is gravel driveway, small two-lane road, barbed wire fence, and cows, pastures, full barns up by the street, so a little around, we're talking about subdivision making a rural entrance, a rural subdivision. But again, that's all we've got to work through with, you know, the modern, the changes that we have, so we've got to come up with solutions that make a positive impact. Okay. Planning Commission, you guys want to talk about where you took this and your thoughts there?
Sure, I'll take a brief stab at it. So when we started the process of the CSO 18 months ago, and all the meetings we've had with the community and the experts, we felt like the community really thought there could be some changes to the AG1 aspect, not necessarily the CSO. Some of the stuff that came to mind were, they wanted it density neutral, of course. curb and gutter should be optional, it shouldn't be required, narrower streets, maybe have the design process a little different about how it's developed per se, because there are some builders that do a great job in the city of Milton, and there are some of the larger ones that really don't care about the city of Milton. So maybe the design process, maybe some incentives for larger lots. If someone wants to develop a two to three acre lot, maybe we should give them some incentives. That's something that we want. Instead of taking that, why don't we try to give them something? Gravel roads, entrances, so this was the sort of brainstorming we wanted to do with council as far as, what is your rural? What is your vision? What is your goal? And maybe we can get there. But as far as what we had before, the meeting before, to me, it was something that was done quickly in order to get it to council, to get the CSO and these together. We felt like, it took us 18 months to do a CSO, we felt like we could do this, not in 18 months, but in two to three months, to really get input and brainstorm with y'all to put all of our ideas on paper, to let staff give back to us. I mean, that was pretty much the goal on deferring it, was trying to make it better, really.
And engage the community.
Yeah, and absolutely to engage the community. And I'll let anyone else speak on anything.
No, I think that pretty much covers all that we had. I mean, we went through it, each section of it, and we felt like that there could be significant improvements made if we had some time to look at it. We just, first look we got at was at the meeting.
And we had some procedural issues with subdivision regs, text amendments, CSO, and we were like, you know, I was, my opinion, council vote on the CSO, give us time to work through the AG1 stuff, and maybe we could get there.
Okay, so at this point, the desired plan or whatever is to work on it, and then come back before us early in next year with some recommendations? Is that?
Correct.
My correct staff too, on the process?
That's what I'm hearing tonight, and that's certainly a great, yeah, we can absolutely work through that process.
And again, let's, you know, any feedback on council too? Any thoughts on that or changes?
Joe?
Yeah, I mean, our goal in accelerating, well, let me get the timing right, because originally, we were trying to vote on the CSO in this as one thing, and it became obvious to us that we were in serious conflict. As Ken pointed out, there were pieces of the ordinance that shouldn't have been part of the ordinance, they should have been someplace else. We did a little work on splitting those apart, and both those sort of had lives of their own. We've been, as you pointed out, talking about the CSO for, gosh, 18 months, 12 months, whatever it is, I've lost track. And it's become an obvious to us.
I have a timeline prepared if you want to see it.
It's become obvious to me that the city is very divided over this item. Now, tonight, I counted 10 people against, five people for, and two people that are sort of sitting on the fence, not real sure which way they need to go, okay? Now, I would say that the emails that I've got paint a little bit different picture, but not too much. For the most part, it's a, you know, depending on who you ask, it's 50/50. So why do we want to push something that is this divided? Why do we want to continue talking about it? We heard plenty of people saying, "Kill the CSO." It's not that we're trying to kill it, but I'm just worried about we're elongating it too much. So getting to a point where we can at least vote and really get the council's take on whether or not this is worthy, I think was our, it was my goal. And I'll raise my hand and say, I was the guy that sort of said, "Let's quit discussing this and pushing the snowball forward, let's get it up before the council, let's voice our opinion on this." Now, that wasn't true about the adjustments to, or this rural design thing. That wasn't our intent, was to accelerate that. We do want you guys to take your time, look at it, give us some good feedback, that kind of thing. And certainly, we appreciate all the feedback that you've given us on the CSO. But I'll take this opportunity just to point out, you know, we're the elected official, and so our job is to make those decisions, and we wouldn't be doing our job if we gave the planning commission the last say in matters such as this. So while I respect the work and the opinions that you guys have expressed on the CSO, I personally saw it a little bit different, and it was different enough that I thought it was worthy of discussion and a vote.
Oh, yeah? I'm not implying on that. I was implying on the text amendments that we saw. We felt like those were rushed, the ones we saw just last month, the rural design stuff.
Okay.
We felt like those were rushed, because I think Ken's standpoint was, you had to have the text amendments and the CSO together, and we felt like, we can't give you the, we're just not ready to give you the rural design. We're done, we got you the CSO, but we will want some more input on the text, the rural design. That's what I meant by that.
All right.
Okay, and the, since the planning commission meeting before, it was, rural design was essentially a text amendment then?
Well, I don't, I don't think that's what Peyton meant. I mean, it wasn't a text amendment in the context of what I'm calling a zoning amendment. It was a, that was a courtesy review, but that is a modification to our subdivision regulations.
Okay. So essentially, process wise?
He knows, I mean, so he, you understand that.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I was clear on that.
When you guys give us something to work on, we take it serious?
Yeah, I agree.
And for us to, as serious as that is for the outcome of Milton, we weren't going to pass that by. So we said to one another that night, we felt it was important enough to commit the time to it, to give it the proper vetting, to not do a disservice to the community. And although it was a courtesy review, we take that stuff seriously. I would also tell you that, you know, as you've heard from the community who is echoing the voice of the planning commission, we hope to echo the voice of the community, is that we do believe that they can go forward independent of one another, that we've given you enough information to work with on the value or lack thereof of the CSO, that's now for you guys to determine. But with the text amendments and the rural design component of this, what's the worst-case scenario? Is nothing changes right now with a vote from you guys on the CSO. Worst-case scenario is it falls back in the standards that we have today, and that's been pretty workable, you know, for a long time, since we've been a city. We know that there is some pressure to make some changes to those, and I think that that's what we're, you know, we're trying to work through. But I personally don't feel the pressure to make that change as fast when that can be a very viable solution for us at the end of the day, if we do the AG1 standards and rural, rural design standards well. They don't need to be linked to the CSO.
Okay. Anybody else? Any commission? Anybody on the council? You know, just to make a statement, I, you know, obviously want to listen to everybody, and again, you know, everybody's got sometimes conflicting views. I think everybody's intent is all good, and want the same thing. I'd like to say, you know, things have to be balanced and reasonable, you know, these enhancements. Of course, I, you know, obviously love to drive down the road and not see any other, any new development, any houses or whatever, but again, that's not fair to the people that want to move here or the property owners. So, you know, my position would be, as you look at these things, look for win-win, win-win ideas, things that from the outside, you know, the rest of the community driving by, you see some improvement, but also, you know, some give and take where the folks that actually own the land or building and selling the houses, where they have a little bit of flexibility that incentivizes them to either, you know, less density, or bigger setbacks, or, you know, landscaping or whatever it is to give that quote rural feel that everybody wants, so.
Okay. Any, anything from staff procedure-wise, or, you know, do we need to clarify moving forward what we're doing, or?
It's funny you mention that, because I was just trying to start writing that down, so I could have some, have a takeaway. What I've heard, at least I think is what I've heard, well, let's talk procedurally first. One thing I've heard that hasn't changed is that it's the desire of the council to have the conservation subdivision ordinance as presented, come forward in first presentation on November the 16th, and then again on December the 7th, where you'll have the ability to take some final action, whatever that final action is. I've heard that as one takeaway. I've also heard that maybe there's some desire to work with the planning commission to continue to enhance these, what we're calling rural design standards. Because the planning commission acted upon that, and because they took official action, Ken and I believe that the right way to get that back to them is to actually bring it to the council in the form of a council meeting, and have you then officially remand it back to them. If they hadn't made a recommendation, that kind of signals the fact that they're ready for us to take it to the council. I think I probably need to bring it to the council for you then to decide as the body whether or not you want it to go back there, and we certainly can work. Those are kind of where I'm taking my two takeaways at this point. Am I missing anything?
My question is, you had the text amendments and the subdivision regs. The text amendments?
You're still holding those.
Okay, those, okay. You're talking about the subdivision regs.
I'm talking about the thing that you acted upon. In order to get it back to you, I think I have to bring it to the council for them to tell me to bring it back to you, and because we don't historically vote in work session, I don't think that action can happen tonight. So if you see it appear, is what I'm saying, is if you see it appear in a council meeting, that's by design.
Okay.
So it could potentially come back to you for further work.
And one other item before we leave here, we actually, Peyton and I met this afternoon with Jack Linden with Milton Grows Green, and while I didn't get into it, he had a packet at the committee, and Jack, if you don't mind, I'll ask you to come up and just tell the council a little bit and the planning commission with the committee on Milton Grows Green, and that you guys have been working on a plan that you'd like to submit, that maybe that the council and planning commission could review, and, you know, possibly work on together if there's interest there. So if you want to take just a minute and explain that to any of you guys that don't know.
Yeah, our committee has gone, we have a land use and planning subcommittee in MGG.
And if you don't mind, tell us who those members are.
Yeah, sure. Myself, and my wife, and Kathy Johnson, she's actually chairman of that particular subcommittee, Charlie Fisher, Laura Renter, and Cindy Ead are the members of that, six of us. What we've come up with is, we've made some changes to the draft that's currently online, and some of those are significant changes, some of them are minor wording changes. But what we did is, we looked at the suggestions that the planning commission made to the city council, and decided which ones we thought were valid suggestions for changes, and which ones we wanted to leave alone, and where we thought they were valid concerns, we went ahead and made the changes. So that's the, forms the basis of what we've done with that 22-page document. The other piece that's significant was, we felt that it was important that all of the rather extensive review process that's called out in the CSO, which is five different sections in the middle of that document, starting with what plans to submit, talking about the way the community development department reviews those plans, the site visits that they do based on those plans, then the actual planning process that the developer needs to go through in terms of identifying the primary conservation areas, and trying to fit the houses into that space, all that part, and then finally, the review process by both the planning commission and the city council, and the final vote by the city council. We felt that all those things were really important, and that they ought to be used not just for the CSO, but for any new subdivision that comes before.
Okay. And let me just, I want to clarify, just so that, you know, this is not a presentation here.
Right.
Most of us haven't seen that, or near the public, but, you know, that is something that I believe you guys have given to staff, is that correct, Chris?
Staff's received a copy of it, but hasn't really done anything with it, because we don't have direction.
Correct. So really, direction would be, does the council, and obviously, and also the planning commission want to look at that, have staff, you know, procedural is, I don't know if you want to, if the council wants to see it and form their own opinion, if you'd want staff to vet through it, and then submit it to us, or, you know, my suggestion would be, possibly pass that on to the members here, and then we can talk later if we want to set up a work session or whatever, and kind of go through it and take a look at it, you know, if there's interest. Is that?
Unless directed by the council, I don't feel comfortable having staff review a competing document to one that is already before the council. And I believe that you would need to take action on the one that's in front of you that's been through the process, before we do a thorough review of a different document. And we'd also need to have the discussion at some point as to, you know, what are the, what are the elements of this type of ordinance that the council supports, and which is the elements that they don't support? Because what I don't want this to turn into is a parading of like ordinances in front of the council, one after one after one, which legally would be possible, but practically is difficult. I kind of need the council to provide that direction on this first one that's in front of you, and then we'll see where we went on any subsequent ones.
Question on that.
So, Jack, the document that you've got, does that address both CSO and rural design, or is it just rural design, one that you've given to staff?
The only reference we made to the rural design document was, we were suggesting that this process piece that we're talking about putting into the subdivision ordinance itself, we want, we want to reference that as far as the rural design, so that, again, rural design is one possible design for subdivisions, has to go through that review process. Otherwise, we haven't made any changes or suggestions to that.
Okay, that gets back to you, you, Chris, then. We have an existing CSO document that we've been trying to vet for a long period of time. So what you're suggesting is, we need to first take action on that document before you would even consider?
Well, coming from a perspective of trying to watch the council build consensus on conservation subdivision ordinance, in that, it is clear that there's not. And it is clear that there's not consensus around what I would determine to be several key factors, a couple of them being wastewater treatment, less than one acre development. You know, and I could list you kind of in a bucketed format, those things that I think that there's council opinion on that's not unified and all go in the same direction. Kind of, it would be important to know which ones of those are big enough deals that they prevent us from moving forward, you know? If all of a sudden, the majority of the council says, "I just can't get comfortable with less than one acre development in Milton," then any future ordinance that's brought forward in front of this body that would suggest less than one acre development would be an ordinance that would be foolish to bring forward. But I don't know exactly what those deal killer points are yet, because you haven't acted upon this first conservation subdivision ordinance. So a lot will be, I can learn a lot from either the council's adoption of it in its current format, or a modified format, or its denial of the ordinance that's in front of you today. Can learn a lot from that, which is why if it's coming forward in the next couple of meetings, that's very helpful, because then I can make a better recommendation on what to bring forward to the council that might come at a later date.
Because I think the concern may be, as you said, Chris, just, are we just, you know, continuing on with a different ordinance that's already in front of us, and continue and continue and continue, so. Matt?
Would it be safe to say then, Chris, that we might be able to take what Milton Grows Green has put together, bring that, is, look at it independently, and then use that as far as ideas in a modified ordinance, if that was a route that the council decided to go?
Absolutely.
And that was my point, if you want to just pass it out, and then, you know, obviously, you can look at ideas.
Right.
And then if moving forward after that, you know, if it's something the council wants to look at and have the planning commission vet through, could certainly do it.
Sure, be happy to. We can either forward that to you, or it'd be great if that could come from, directly from the committee itself that way. It's the, it's not the yesterday version, it's the current version.
Okay.
Let me just point out, that would be simple to do, because we've used the Microsoft Word redline version, so everything that's in the document as it appears right now is still there. It's either in black and white, or in red crossed out, and anything we've added is a red underline. So it's easy to see how our document varies from the current document.
Okay.
And I'd almost like to see, you know, moving forward, once council reviews that, you know, again, we can talk about setting up a work session or like we did before, maybe interview council members individually and come up with a, a matrix and, you know, there may be some items on it that, you know, nobody's for, there may be some that everybody's for, but at least to bring forward as a.
So I'm going to get ahead of a question I know is coming. And that is, if the council has asked to be in receipt of these documents and knowing that they're coming, my guess is that the members of the public and the people assembled here tonight, they would want the benefit of that as well. And having said that, I, I can try to, I'd like to get your direction, I guess, as to whether or not we make those available through the city's resources from the city's website.
Absolutely not. Kidding.
But I'm just looking for that, you know, public direction that it's okay to post them on our website because at this point, we'd have to be very cautious in saying that these are not, you know, we, we run the risk by you asking for them that we're going to have conflicting documents out there and the public's not going to know which exact one you're looking at.
I would say, and obviously, you know, we'd want the public to have access to any information, but we just need to be careful to clarify that this is coming from a committee and it hasn't been vetted through staff and it's not endorsed or not from council or whatever, but it's just, you know, some ideas out there.
Ken, I don't know, do you have any?
Well, I mean, there's two schools of thought on that. I mean, I think that's fine with the disclaimer, I think that's perfectly appropriate, or to the extent that there's something a little more concrete once it's been vetted by staff and perhaps by either the planning commissioner. I mean, that, that's up, that's up to you all, but if you're going to do it with, just based upon the recommendation of Milton Grows Green, then I would certainly put that disclaimer out there so there is no confusion as to what exactly they're reviewing. I like that.
Yeah, and again, yeah, my only concern is, obviously want the public to have access, but does it send the wrong message? You know, it may be something that's sent out to the public that we're not, you know, we're not in agreement at all and it may stir some things up. To Ken's point, you know, we may want to go through more of a process, tweak it to where, you know, the council, you know, something that, that we think may be possible to look at and then get out to the public so that, something that we're going to vote on.
Before something's put out loud and picked apart, it might be worth knowing whether there's any council action in, in, in moving forward with it at all, so like that.
Well, it sounds like we need to, to address the item in front of us on the 7th and then based on what comes out of that, either move perhaps just looking at something that Milton Grows Green has put forward or perhaps the document that's before the 7th.
It might be something as simple as the fact that now you know these documents exist because you've just been told about them. And if you feel as though they could aid in your decision making on either November 16th or the 7th, maybe it's wise to, to, to seek them out rather than asking for them to be mass delivered.
Okay.
So first of all, I want to say I, I respect anybody who wants to spend any amount of time thinking about conservation subdivisions and how that needs to be turned into an ordinance for the city. So I have a great deal of respect for everything that Jack and his team has done. In fact, we talked about it earlier today. The challenge though is interruption of a process and allowing a certain amount of discovery and transparency in that process for, for something that's as sensitive as this. I'm worried right now, if we take anything out of yet another document and try to introduce it into what's already in motion, we'll start getting confused. We won't understand where did this come from. They may very well be good ideas and I'm certainly not going to discount any of the ideas that are in the document. However, I think we've got something in motion. We need to leave it what it is, we need to debate it the way we normally would debate it at a meeting, we need to vote on it. And if it passes, well, then it passes. If it doesn't pass, then we get another round if we think it's worthy of another round of discussion. So I don't think that we're discounting anything, any work, any ideas that are being done. I just think the proper placement of that in a process is very critical to, to, to do what, you know, and follow the rules that we set for ourselves, so.
And I would tend to agree with both council member Hewitt and Longoria that it could get a little confusing and maybe, you know, we continue this process and then after that process, depending on the outcome, if council wants to look at that fresh, I would think probably be the best scenario, but.
Bill?
I'll take a little different tack. I think anytime we can get community input, I think that's invaluable. Anybody that knows Jack's credentials here knows that he's embedded in conservation and preservation for many years. And we, Jack and I talked about his suggestions here, and I don't think they're that widely different than what we've been considering here for the last, what, 18 months? And we've, we've taken everybody else's public comments here every time we've met, so we have the benefit of those comments too. So why not take an independent, well, actually a city sanctioned organization like Milton Grows Green with the experience and background that they have and considered this whole thing? I, I hesitate to get down to the 7th of December here and wrestle with the issues that are in front of us and knowing that there are some other ideas out there that might mold this whole thing and satisfy 90% of the people out here, never going to satisfy everybody, obviously. But I think there's great merit in an organization, a group like this that, like Joe Longoria said, has spent the time and effort to, to review this whole thing and, and call upon the experience that they've had over several years specifically on this issue. And I, I value everybody's opinion, everybody that spoke tonight and, and in past nights too. I, I would welcome any additional information, the more information that I have in making a, a decision on any situation, I certainly welcome it. I, I hate to make decisions in a vacuum for sure. Obviously, we're not there right now, but I think there's a lot more valuable information. We ought to take it into consideration.
You know, and, and I'll also defer to, Ken, do you have any, you know, and again, six or one half dozen the other ways. I, I think, you know, to me, I don't really want to convolute the two, but to some folks' point, I mean, just like public comment, I mean, or, or anybody else sending an email or whatever, I mean, if the planning commission or in the Milton Grows Green does have this information, they certainly could, you know, send it to council members and they could look at it and, and use those ideas or not when they're, in their decision moving forward. I don't know that I would want to have it as a, you know, an official, you know, unless you guys disagree, an official document out there while we're still looking at one that's already on the books. What's your opinion on that?
Mention this to the city manager, I mean, it's an open record now because it has been received by the government in the course of governmental operation. So it's, what I was answering was the notion of putting it on the city's website and giving it sort of the seal of, of city sanction. So that's why my thought was if we are going to put it on the city website or otherwise hold it out as some city, city sanctioned document, they're just being appropriate disclaimer to the extent that it needs to be released. It could be released by Milton Grows Green, it could be released by the city manager's office, subject to an open records request being made. And candidly, subject to the disclaimer, I'd be comfortable with it being on the website. Just let's make sure to avoid confusion as to what the document's doing.
Okay. Second question.
I don't have a problem putting it on the web. I mean, given the fact that we've invested as much time and energy talking about it, we should put it on the website and mark it clearly, alternative plan submitted by Milton Grows Green so that nobody gets confused. My worry is, I don't want to confuse people, all right? So, and even just saying that, now I'm confused, but the bottom line is, we've got a document we've been working on for quite a long time. We need to make decisions on that. It's an organic process, it, we've been working on it for a long time, ideas get injected into it on a regular basis. We're not going to limit that the next time we discuss it. It could very well be modified the night we talk about it. But I don't want to make wholesale changes outside of that process. It's just, it's not the right way to do it. I mean, if this document has merit, then it'll, it'll get there.
Can I, is it safe to say that we'd move forward as planned? This document, welcome to put a disclaimer, can, it is public record, obviously. If you've sent it to the staff, you know, we could put it on the website with a disclaimer, you know, making sure, sure the two aren't tied together, but then folks can use that information, you know, to the best they want to use it in making their decision. And, you know, if, depending on what the outcome is with the, the ordinance that's in place now, once we vote on that, you know, could either, that may affect it or, or could, could recreate something later if, if there was desire to do that. Is it safe to say that that would work? Is the council okay with that or?
I guess just a clarification, even with the CSO that we have out there today, if I look at how we voted on things in the past, when we make a motion, it doesn't go up as this is the document and we're going to just, we're going to accept it or reject it. We may take components of it and say, this, we've vetted this, we don't think this is valid. We think these components are, I'm not saying for CSO or against CSO, the CSO document has a lot of components in it today. When we do in a, I, I guess from my understanding, when we voted before, when someone makes, we could, we could make a motion to accept it as presented, or someone could make an amendment to say, well, I make a motion that we accept the CSO with the following text changes and then we eliminate, or act things through, whether it's CSO or anything that we're voting, isn't that the way we do it?
It is, and, but the one thing that our city attorney is awfully cautious about is, is making sure that we don't bring a cat and adopt a dog. You know, so it has to be one of those things that is, you know, we haven't made substantial modifications on the fly without it starting back through a process, so.
Even to, even to go farther, I am much more comfortable with you removing things that have been advertised than with adding things that have not been advertised. And so it's sort of one of those gut checks and it just depends upon the nature in which we have modified something that has been advertised. And you look to me to make those recommendations and I'm happy to make them and I would make them this time.
So we're still clear as mud.
I think we've got direction. I think I'm prepared to, to say that the, the council, I think, is saying bring the conservation subdivision ordinance forward.
Correct.
On November 16th and 7th, I'm going to bring the rural design forward as well because I need to bring that to you for you to decide if you want to send it to the planning commission. I'll work with the city attorney on whether or not we can get comfortable with a disclaimer that would allow those documents to post on the city's website. I'll try to embed them on the Milton Grows Green page as opposed to commingling them with conservation subdivision. And that's really what I'm kind of taking as a, as a takeaway to.
On this, if anybody that's in the room, and I don't know if this is, in, sort of having to go through the traditional open records request or anything like that, if anybody, is it, is it legal? If there's anybody here that, that wants to see that document that's coming from Milton Grows Green can simply email.
Email me personally.
Forward it to them, making it an easy process.
That's right.
Yeah, or email anybody, you know, any, any one of us, we'll pass it on.
Even, even verbal is still, is still allowed under the act.
Sir, can I get some clarification? So where, the Milton Grows Green document, Chris, between now and the mayor and council's hearing of the, there's a first presentation on, on the next, in the next meeting.
That's right.
That's not a, it's not necessarily, that's not a discussion of Milton Grows Green ads or, or even for what the planning commission has recommended at that point.
In the first presentation, there would be no discussion. It's just a public presentation.
So the next opportunity is December 7th. And at that point, just to, there is really not an opportunity for public input on the Milton Grows Green suggestion. It's not vetted, they're not a committee that's been charged with bringing forward a CSO recommendation. The planning commission has spent 18 months doing this. I think you're going to confuse it with the community. You're asking them at that point, that first night really for opportunity to give you input where you can discuss it and measure those things with the night that you're intended to vote on 18 months' worth of work. I think that's a disservice to the.
Paul, that, that's not what we were suggesting. We were saying we're not going to allow that, that we're only going to vote and we're only going to discuss the document that's in process.
Joe, I think we're, we're on the same page, I think. Because my concern is that the, the Milton Grows Green document is going to add confusion because what you're going to get at that meeting is the community given their first opportunity to voice an opinion for, against, or massaging the thing that the Milton Grows Green has brought forward. So I think you're going to muddy the waters that night, as I'm just cautioning against that.
Yeah, and I'm confused because I didn't think we suggested that we were going to put up the Milton Grows Green document at all.
That's why I was getting clarification. Where's it going to reside and how's it going to be available to the community? And if their first opportunity to give you input on what they're going to see with that document is the night that you're voting on the CSO, I think you're going to be muddying the waters.
See, my, yeah, my take would be, you know, if, if that document is vetted out and we're going to discuss it, that would be at a later date where, you know, it's, it's available to the public, they can look at it, we, you know, we've all vetted it out and we can discuss it. I, I do see the point, you know, it could get confusing.
Well, Commission Member Moore, I, I concur, but I'm not going to allow them as a legal matter to take any sort of action or vet a document that has simply been put up for courtesy review by, by the public. That's not going to occur. I can't allow that.
And I'm just looking to the council to help me make the decision as to whether or not you want it out there or whether or not you are interested in receiving it for the purposes of your own decision making process. And certainly we'd provide it to any member of the public.
Let, let me say that, yeah. How about this, rather than, than doing it formally through, you know, posting it or whatever, you know, obviously the, the council or planning commission could, could email Milton Grows Green and ask for a copy of it. Obviously, if you've got a copy of it, Chris, anybody that, you know, from the public that wants to see it, they could, you know, get a copy of it and just kind of leave it at that. And then people individually can, you know, go through it and if there's any, you know, anything that sticks out to them that, you know, as they're making their decision for the 7th, you know, they can use it to their, to their advantage.
I think that's the best place, well, I don't, I don't know that there's a great place to be, but I think that's the best place to be, knowing that there's been a document that's been worked on that I don't know that the entire council has been known as in the making. So I think that's about as the best place we can be at this point.
Yeah, I have not reviewed the document and I don't think council has either, so. Okay. All right, we okay with that then? If anybody wants.
Unless there's additional direction, I've got three points.
Right.
And I can summarize those again, I think they haven't changed in the last hour, so I think we're good. I'll move forward with CSO on November 16th, bring forward rural design, and these other documents are available to you or to the public by, in a sort of different ways. Okay?
My last point is that they're going to be available through the city in an open records.
If somebody wants to email me.
Send an email.
I'll be happy to just send them back out.
Just to make it clear.
Real easy term.
Anything from the planning commission? Thank you guys for meeting with us.
Are we meeting in December, Robin?
We do not have a meeting.
Okay, so now, so.
Other than that, there is, you spoke about having a special workshop, schedule one.
That's, so.
We have to decide a date.
Okay. But I'm just. But can we have a, I guess my question is, we can't have a work session on? On the text amendments? I mean.
Right, we can't, we have to decide on a date.
Okay, all right.
That's what you all voted for.
Right.
And, and before we, we adjourn, I'd again want to thank the public here, appreciate all your comments, certainly open to more feedback, you know, please, just emails, call us, whatever you need to do and, and keep an eye, you know, calendar, the next couple of meetings, we'll be discussing these items, so, or at least the, the CSO. So thank you for being here. All right, we're adjourned.